I do, seconded. I got Deputy Mayor Andrew Stevens. Thanks, folks. We just have come out of private session. In private sessions, the committee in the whole was chaired by Deputy Mayor Stevens. I'm going to ask that you open this report, Andrew. Got it?
All right, round two. 1971 Albert Street. This has already been seconded at the first meeting. So what I'll do now is just ask the city clerk to provide an overview of the report and the recommendations and options.
Got it?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So essentially, counsel, before you, you have the original recommendation put forward by executive committee. So procedurally, if counsel chooses to accept the recommendation to deny the request for a reduction of tax penalties, when this comes to a vote, you would vote in favor of it, if that's what you choose. Now, conversely, as the option is presented-
Sorry, is Jim talking? Because I can't hear him.
Yes.
I can't hear Jim either.
Yeah, I can't hear Jim.
Oh, I know what's-
I can hear you guys.
Same here.
Can anybody hear me now? Can you hear me now? Taking that as a no?
Can you hear-
Can you guys hear me? Andrew?
Guess not.
Oh, we are on mute. Can you take us off of mute? No, we're on mute on your screen.
Up at the top.
We're right beside "Leave the Meeting." Elaine, can you see it? Got it? Got it, got it, got it. Okay, sorry, folks. Turns out we were on mute.
I'll begin again. Thank you, Mayor.
There you go.
Everyone can hear me now, I assume? The-
Yes.
Great, thanks. So the options before counsel, as my office would see it, is you have the recommendation that is now before counsel that arose from the executive committee meeting. Now, if counsel wants, chooses to accept the recommendation to deny the request for a reduction in the tax penalties, should that come to a vote, you would vote in favor if you want to deny the request. Conversely, during your discussions this morning, if you wish to provide some level of support, first, counsel should not approve the recommendation for the proposed tax reductions that I referred to earlier. And if that is defeated, then you would require someone to put a motion forward proposing the option one, as outlined in the report, which outlines a $600,000 grant. And those are the procedural options, as I see them. So if you want to proceed, if you want to deny the request for the tax penalty reduction, then you would vote in favor of the recommendation from executive committee. If you choose some other level of support, you need to defeat the recommendation from executive committee and then propose a separate distinct motion.
Okay, opening up the floor, Counselor Hawkins.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I'll move the administration's recommendation.
Do we have a seconded?
It's already on the floor.
It's already on the floor, thank you. Any discussion to the motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, if I might.
Certainly.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I wish to repeat some points that I've made on other places on other days. I'm moving the motion that the request by Smith Street Lands for a partial property tax deduction be denied. I have three points. First point is that I don't feel there is any legal basis for granting, for counsel granting the exemption. There are five categories in Section 244.2 of Cities Act under which such an exemption can be granted. The only one that has prompted any real discussion is 244.2A, a change in the property to the extent that counsel considers it inappropriate to collect part of the taxes. Some have felt there's a slight discretion here. I feel there's no discretion here. That section, change in the property, is meant to deal with changes which are sudden, unforeseen, that impair the property owner's ability to pay its taxes. Things like catastrophic loss, land contamination, unforeseen weather, flood, those kinds of things. And I don't think any of that applies here. I indeed feel that nothing in the relevant timeframe between 2018 and 2020 has changed. And the most important piece of evidence of that was presented by the requister itself. They presented an appraisal for $3.1 million for the property. That appraisal was updated in the last few weeks. It's still $3.1. That suggests to me that the land use has not changed. There's no liability on the part of taxes situation. The court has been very clear, and this is a central point, that ahead of all other claimants, the cities claim to $2.9 million for property taxes owing, it takes first. So I feel that the law precludes us from granting this exemption. And if there's any discretion, I think it's so narrow that counsel should not risk taking it. I want to make a second point, because the administration suggested an alternative. The alternative position is that we grant a conditional grant. Again, I don't think there's any basis in law for allowing us to grant a conditional grant, first, under this, which would really be a tax exemption. First of all, we're not dealing with the owner. We're dealing with Smith Street. But secondly, a request for a conditional grant is premature, because we have no idea whether or not such a grant will be needed. We have no idea whether the requisite land is going to be purchased by Smith Street. We have no idea what the arrangements are for charges against that purchase price. We have no idea simply whether, at the end of the day, they'll need a grant. It's premature for them to ask us. Now, they say that they need the grant because the deal won't go through unless there's some remittance of the taxes owing. As I understand, from the testimony given the other day by Smith Street, this is a very large, a very large project that they're speculating on, project in the tens of millions of dollars. If that is the case, it is inconceivable that $700,000 could halt that project. If they can't raise $700,000 to get a project like that going, how can they possibly argue that they can put in place the necessary financing to bring that project to reality? So it's premature to think about a conditional grant. That's my second point. My third point, which is a little less technical and probably a little more made in the public interest, we have an obligation to the public to try and to protect public assets. And here, the public asset in question, a public asset recognized by the court, is our claim against this land in first priority for property taxes owing. We have never, to my knowledge, given a conditional grant to subsidize a private developer for a private development. This is not the way we give grants. We have granting programs for public purposes to assist citizens in need, for public projects and causes, that go through a competitive process. We should not be short-circuiting that process on what is highly speculative understanding of the future, which may or may not be developed. To give this private developer a tax exemption would establish a precedent that would invite every developer with a good idea to come up to us, seeking a tax break-
My stop one.
-that would in turn erode the city's revenue base and depolish the funds critical for providing services which our citizens need. If we grant this exemption, the public will lose confidence in our ability to manage public assets and finances carefully and in a considered way, and I believe they'll be very angry with us. So for those three reasons, one, the lack of a legal exemption, two, the prematurity of giving a conditional grant, and three, our obligation to the public to protect their assets, compel me to endorse what I think is a very fine recommendation and set of reasons presented to us by the administration. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Hawkins. Anyone else wish to discuss the motion on the floor? Counselor Stevens?
Thank you. Through the chair, just to say that administration provided us sound advice to deny the request. I've seen no information brought to my attention that would alter that opinion. I do thank administration for the rigorous analysis they did in providing us with potential options. I think the main recommendation to deny is the best advice, and I would encourage counsel to pursue that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Stevens. Counselor Shaw?
Through you, Madam Mayor. My question was, and still is, they knew there was a $700,000 addition to the cost. They knew going into this, they had the option whether to purchase it, whether to put the bid, whether to buy it, with that $700,000. So if they knew it going in, I don't understand why the ask is to have it given up. So, thank you. Through you.
Thank you, Counselor Shaw. Counselor Sakidniak?
Thank you. So I made a little list for myself, and this will be quick, of what I think are some of the risks of approving the forgiveness of the debt and the risk of declining the offer. And so when I think for myself, what are the risks in, if we approve this request by the developers? For me, if the sale goes through, and this was already discussed, we potentially set a precedent of reducing taxes and/or penalties. Also, another one is that if the property owners aren't able to get the tenants they envision, and the land could sit as a parking lot or gets developed with whoever will fill the space, whether or not it's a good fit. Also, we send a signal during the pandemic that we prioritize reducing expenses for developers first and foremost. And another one is that we would be acting outside the legal basis for forgiving taxes. The only risk that I've identified so far of declining this request from the developers is that the city doesn't get the money that we are owed. And for clarity, my understanding is the cost that the city has actually incurred regarding this property is $2 million for the filling of the hole. Am I wrong on that? Is that the only cost that we've incurred? Can I get clarity on that?
Chris, I believe this question will be for you.
Through you, Mayor Masters. So the total outstanding taxes as of December 1st are $2.9 million. The backfill costs were $2.1 million, and the penalties on the backfill costs were $595,000.
Right. But the cost, through the share, cost that we've had to pay is the $2 million or $2.1 to fill that hole?
Through Mayor Masters, yes. The cost that we, the capital expense to backfill was $2.124 million.
Okay. And so, you know, based on the sheer number of risks for approving this request from the developers, and also, I'm sure that we can, I also feel with the risk of not getting back the money owed to us, but specifically that $2 million that was spent, I feel that that risk is more manageable than all the other risks that I've identified by approving this request for the developer. So based on that assessment, I can't support this request from the developer, and I will be approving the recommendations from city administration.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor LeBlanc?
Thank you. Like to just take a step back and begin by saying, the purchase of this property is something that Smith Street Lands would like. It's not a need of theirs. They've told us that they have enough money to pursue this want if they so desired, but simply that it wouldn't make business sense for them, in that it would, I take it, undermine the profitability of the project. I think in a time of COVID, we're dealing with citizens who have unmet needs, and we should not be catering to unmet wants. If we have $700,000 to throw around, we can think of other places to put that. So I'm going to be voting against it for that principal basis. I think there were two other good reasons, maybe more detailed, to vote against it. The first one is, as I've heard them speak, my understanding is that Smith Street is trying to draw a distinction between property taxes properly levied and penalties for not paying those taxes. And they're trying to say, well, penalties on the taxes we haven't paid or haven't been paid on behalf of the property aren't really money the city is out. I think that's true of all property taxes. What property taxes are for is to fund the services we provide to citizens. We're not saying it's one-for-one on out-of-pocket expenses. And so I think their argument's flawed in that, and they're somehow saying, the penalties we impose for not paying property taxes are illegitimate. I think that doesn't hold water. The second thing they've tried to do, I think that's related, is to highlight the interest rate that we apply on penalties, so regularly saying, yeah, the city imposes 27% interest rate, and isn't that bad? They're almost framing it as though we've singled them out as a non-compliant property, when of course, we're not bringing the hammer down on them because we're mad about the unsightly hole. Rather, we just have a rule that says, if you don't pay your taxes, you have to take some hit on interest, and that's 27%, whether you're Person A or Person B. So I think they've mischaracterized that. Taxes are taxes, and taxes are owing in a tough time in COVID, whether you're a developer or a single mom. And so I don't think we ought to give the breaks to them. The third point I'd make is about the purpose of this special council meeting, and as public knows, the private council meeting we had before this. Essentially, what that was, was on our December 16th meeting, Smith Street Lands said, well, we can't tell you what the project is, but you ought to trust us that it's going to be amazing, and if we could tell you, you'd all vote in favor of it. At Counselor Hawkins' suggestion, we held a private, secret meeting this morning, gave them the opportunity to do that. And frankly, they didn't share anything new with us. It's not a breach of confidentiality to say that no confidential information was shared. We don't know what they're looking to build, how tall that's going to be, who's going to build it, when it will be built, what tenants or purposes it might be used for. We heard some beautiful promises, and we're being asked to put an amount of blind faith, as he framed it, in the principal developer, Smith Street Lands. I think on Wednesday, we rejected the idea that we could make a decision like this on blind faith, and we're in the same situation today. So on those bases, the one of principal fairness, who we give tax breaks to, and the one of evidence or blind faith, I say both of those way against this proposal by Smith Street Lands and in favor of the recommendation by administration. So I'll be voting with administration's recommendation to not give the tax break here. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor LeBlanc. Counselor Stadnichuk?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you, I have a question for the administration regarding a statement that's in the submission that was prepared by lawyer Tony Merchant for Smith Lands. In paragraph 71, they discussed collectible versus applicable tax penalties. And at paragraph 72 of that submission, Smith Street Lands does not say that the penalties are not applicable, but they're claiming that they're not collectible within a reasonable time. So my question to the administration is, are there any other, is there some validity at all to this statement that if something is just not collectible, that we can grant them some leniency? Through the chair.
Thank you, Counselor Stadnichuk. Mr. Wery, are you on the line?
Yes, Mayor Masters, I am. I've had that section of the brief in front of me. In our view, the reason that's in the submission, I believe, is to try and fit the facts into, I believe it's subsection C of the, to establish that if the taxes are in fact uncollectible, that that would be a rationale for waiving the penalties as part of a decision by counsel. In our view, the facts of this particular report and the submissions don't support that, that they're not collectible.
Thank you, Mr. Wery.
Thank you very much.
Any further questions?
Yes, and so, well, I would just like to also point out that I was aware also in the appraisal that the Smith Street Lands presented, that they did some comparisons of other properties, and that Smith Street Lands also owns, they purchased a surface parking lot at 2015 Smith Street, which is the northeast corner of Smith and 13th, across from the YMCA. And they purchased that three years ago for $6.15 million. So the property at 1971 Albert Street is less than half that cost. It does seem to me that there is, that the price per square foot of land at that property at Smith Street, 2015 Smith Street, was $134 per square foot land, and the 1971 Albert Street is priced at $100 per square foot land. So it does seem to me that the whole question about the reasonableness of the cost of this land and the ability to pay, as their own submission has pointed out, they do not say that the penalties are not applicable. So it is a question of whether or not we want to give leniency, and I tend not to give that. I do think that the, as they even say, that these penalties are applicable. And I do believe in, as other counselors have pointed out, that this could set a precedent where in future situations, we have developers trying to negotiate taxes owing or penalties. And so for all of the reasons that others have spoken, I do support administration's recommendation, and I will be voting in favor of it.
Thank you, Counselors Stadnichuk. Counselor Fendura?
Hey, Mayor Masters, I'm just going to get back into this. Trying to manage things. Can you, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, John. Please proceed.
Okay. Okay. First, I'd like to have a couple of questions. We're talking about taxes and levies and penalties. The Smith Street arguing that penalties are not taxes, that they are levies, and cities arguing, well, it is, that these are all taxes. So that's one comment. The question is, when we are, let's say this gets rejected, so the approval or the way the cities writing the report is saying to deny, are we going after the previous order for the $2.124 million for the backfill plus the levy? Or are we just going after the taxes and the levy? Or what are we, where are we going after?
Through you, Mayor Masters. So how the city collects on unpaid property taxes is through the Tax Enforcement Act, through our tax enforcement processes. And so we are currently working our way through that process. Over the last year and a half, council has approved various initial steps in that enforcement process, and I would frame it in the fact that we're kind of going through that final phase of the enforcement process that requires us to make an application to a body of the provincial government. The end result of that, should that be approved, is the city would take title to the property. Earliest that would happen would be June of 2021.
Okay, so through you, Mayor Masters, so that, from my understanding, would be then, any of the penalties, any of the levies, any of the taxes, anything that we, the citizen vagina paid for to backfill that hole, as we call it, we cannot collect then? We would have to wait till, let's say, as you mentioned in the report, that in the year you would put it, or you would put it up for sale. Is that correct? So the only time we can recoup all that, if you put it back up for sale and hoping that you will get $3.1 or higher, and then the city would recoup all that, or the citizen's vagina, that this, the $2.124, citizen's vagina paid to backfill that hole. Am I correct?
So through you, Mayor Masters, that's my understanding, but perhaps I'll ask Mr. Wery if he has any additional comment.
Apologies. I don't have anything to add to what Mr. Lacy has provided. Thank you.
Okay. So then, to me, we could be sitting, we could be sitting on this empty property for another four years. We might not be, we might not be able to sell this property for what we're asking for. And then the taxpayers, again, are the comments I made, that we, all the taxpayers, and we the stewards of that, so I can argue the other way around, that we are stewards of the taxes, and we could be sitting on this thing for a long time. We've already been sitting on this thing for a very long time, and we're not going to recoup any of this stuff. We could, we might not even, we might not even get the price that we were looking for. And if we don't, it's going to come back to us, we might not approve again, so it might be lower. And arguing that we cannot do any exemptions or taxes, we've done a lot of things before where we grin things and we manage things the best as we can. For me, I feel that we should get ourselves out of this hole and move forward. I mean, there are some ways that we could manage this, and I understand the process that we are undertaking. There's legal, there's legal aspects on this. And the 244.2A, it does give one little leeway. It could be interpreted different ways. It could be interpreted six, seven different ways of what you can do here. My comments to this is, if we sit on this, and we can't sell the land, we put it into an inventory. Great. We need to mention to our taxpayers that we do have a whole bunch of land that's sitting in our inventory, like the Duney Lands, like the Taylor Fuel Lands, Southeast Lands. We've paid lots of money for those, and we've been sitting on them. I'm not sure how we can explain that. So we've been sending a lot of money that's not making any money for the citizen vagina. And this could be another one that could sit there. So with that 244.2A, I can see that you could interpret it a different way. And on this one- You can interpret number 2A in different ways. So I'm looking at it from a different perspective, that we're not going to gain any more than what we lose. So the penalties are penalties, taxes are taxes. I pay my taxes, and I, and my taxes are up to date. But we're going to get more taxes out of this instead of sitting on an empty lot with no taxes paid, and we're hoping, just like the, the presentation from, from Smith Street Lands, that we're talking about there, hoping to gain something, hoping that what they're saying is true, and something's going to happen there. So we're talking about the same thing. We're going to sit on this, and that's, that's my opinion. We've sat on many pieces of land that we have, that's in, it's in our inventory. So that's, that's, that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Counselor Bresciani?
Thank you, Mayor Masters. Through, through you. For administration, have they granted anything like this previously to the chair at any time that they can remember?
Thank you, Laurie. Go ahead. Or Byron, if you have an answer?
I would look to the taxation people. In my recollection, we've, we grant tax exemptions on occasion for different public policy reasons, but I, I'm not aware of a request like this one in the time that I've been advising council.
Go ahead, Laurie.
Okay, sorry. I was wondering if he was asking the other staff. I guess on the legal grounds, and I'm not a lawyer, I'm, I'm a counselor, and I represent the people of my ward in Regina, and I want to ensure that we are making the right decision. And I think as all of council, I worry in the fact that administration has come forward and said that this, they do not support this, for the many reasons that they've indicated in previous meetings. The concern that I have here is the assessment, the value of the assessed value that has come up, and it's a 1.2 or 1.3 million dollar difference. That's the concern I have. The developer, developer has come forward and said it has been assessed at 3.1, the city, I think, is around the 4.2. Again, that's a million dollars that we're talking about in a difference of an assessment. And I think at the end of the day, that's where, when we're talking about $600,000, or almost $700,000 here of penalty and fees that have to be paid, I worry a little bit about the fact financially that there's many partners here, they knew this going in, that this is something that, to make this deal happen, they would have known this when they got this from, from, through the bank. Council was, was, and it was a very close vote, to allow even the parking lot for a year, which I thought, again, the trust factor here. And behalf, behalf of the taxpayers of Regina, I don't think they want to see a parking lot on this corner, but we entrusted through this company to say, organization to say that, yes, we will, we will admit that. But then, secondly, comes this situation where now they want an abatement for the back, for the taxes or the penalties. So there, again, there's, there's two points for me here. The assessed value that's a concern for me, that I don't know, we're talking a million dollars difference. And the second is that what presence are we setting for future? It doesn't matter who the developers are, it doesn't matter, but at the end of the day, we're here to set policy, and we have to ensure that we are setting it consistently. And if this is, again, never been done, and this is something that administration is recommending that legally we do not move forward in this regard, then I have to go with what administration has, has indicated at this time in their recommendation. So I will leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bresciani. Counselor Mensonelli? And we're, I'm going to limit you to four minutes, if that's okay.
That's fine. It'll never take that long anyways. This has been a real thorn in the side. I, I appreciate it getting any extra information today. Looking through at the whole backlog that's gone on here, I have to notice that land a block and a half away is valued at a greater value than the land the city would take control of, simply because it has a grandfather parking lot component to it. I was interested in having the citizens of Regina remain whole through this whole endeavor with the last vote we had in this matter, but now that it's back up at the plate, and the decision we make in this could affect property values throughout the downtown and other developers, and a whole backlog of other decisions, I just, it can't be done for me. I, I feel it's too intrusive. I, I don't feel that that's the way it should be done, so I'm going to have to follow through administration's recommendation.
Thank you, Counselor Mensonelli. Seeing no one else available in the chat room, to be clear, the vote that we're going to call is relative to Smith Street Lands' request for a reduction in tax account. The recommendation is that it does not appear to meet any of the criteria established by Section 2442 of the Cities Act, which would allow for such a request to be granted. So the motion before you is to deny the request by Smith Street Lands LTD for a partial property tax reduction on 1971 Albert Street. Mr. Nickel, please call to vote. Sir, you want me to turn you on? Hang on a second. There you go.
Thank you. I will begin with Counselor Hawkins as he moves the motion, please.
In favor of the administration's recommendation.
Counselor Stadnichuk?
In favor.
Counselor Stevens?
In favor.
Counselor Bresciani?
In favor.
Counselor Shaw?
In favor.
Counselor Zehidniak?
In favor.
Counselor Mensonelli?
In favor.
Counselor Moore?
In favor.
Mayor Masters?
In favor.
The motion has carried 10 to 1, Mayor.
Thank you very much for your time this morning, and I would say thank you again for the delegation of the Senate to us in private. I hope everybody feels that they were well informed in terms of making their decision, and I need a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Counselor Stevens. Thanks, everyone. Have a great weekend. Stay safe.[1655.83]